Glenn, I'm just gonna move your chair.
Yep.
Don't joke, someone will ask for a FOIA and like a dog sniffer thing.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Nice of you.
Oh, no. Can I sit?
Butch. Santa Claus.
All right, seeing it's seven o'clock, I'd like to call to order this Board of Selectment meeting for March 11, 2019. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation and the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this meeting is going to be televised by Chelmsford Telemedia for broadcast tonight and for rebroadcast. We have any members of the press here. Chelmsford Independent, thank you. We have one public service announcement. Ken, do you want to read that?
Yes, sir. The Chelmsford Board of Selectmen and School Committee will meet on March 25, 2019 to appoint one representative and one alternate representative to the Neshoba Valley Technical High School Committee to fill three-year terms. Applications are available in the Town Manager's office. Any application should be forwarded back to the Town Manager's office at 50 Billerica Road, Chelmsford, Mass. 0824 by 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, March 20, 2019.
Thank you.
Is that because of the illness of, did somebody resign?
No, there's two openings up. The Don Ayers seat is up and Maria Carafellis, who fulfills the alternate seat, is up.
She is.
But she's informed us that she's not seeking reappointment.
Has nothing to do with Richard, right?
No, no, no. These are just a normal.
By the way, I hear you're making a big improvement.
Yeah. No, these are just a normal rotation of the three-year seats.
Thank you.
All right, we now have open session. Anyone who would like to speak on any matter?
Good evening. As most of you know, my name is Paul Regazio, 25 Clover Hill Drive. I have two friendly comments to make tonight, so nothing shocking. So, one personal and one of very importance to the town. It was 50 years ago today or this month, or next month, actually, that my wife and I were married and we moved into a new Hicks farmhouse in Chelmsford. It was a happy time then. It is now 50 years later and it is, our house is basically empty. Thank God the kids have left. They go gracias. And it's been a good 50 years, but now it's time to leave. So, our house is now on the market because it's too big and I have to say the taxes are too high for us to stand here. So, again, we will be leaving and there was an open house this past Sunday, but that was a snowstorm. During the 50 years, our four children, we raised them as adults, they've all successfully graduated from Chelmsford High School. Our three oldest have successful college experiences and are professionally employed. One is a schoolteacher in Andover and two of them are bank vice presidents, one in Boston and one in Portland, Maine. Our fourth child, our son, Stephen, whom we adopted from Korea 40 years ago, we regret we did not send him to Neshoba Tech where he would have excelled. And I mentioned to all people of Chelmsford, if you have a son who is manually inclined, please send him to Neshoba Tech because that's a good thing for him. However, our son, he has prospered as a gifted carpenter, woodworker, auto mechanic, and he also is my computer guru that whenever I have problems, I go to him. So, he's now working at a commercial testing company down in Virginia and a, well, excuse me, he was working at a commercial testing company, now works at an upscale auto recycling facility down south somewhere. It's been a great 50 years and we thank the current Town Manager, Paul Cohen, the Board of Selectmen, the School Department for a very good 50 years for the Regazio family. Thank you for what you've done. Second item, onto something of very importance to the town. 20 years ago, the state legislature eliminated our single state rep and split our town into four districts, effectively writing our town off politically as far as I'm concerned. Each of our current rep has no more than 11,000 citizens out of a district of 41,000. No one is beholden to Chelmsford and then Chelmsford, in my opinion, has no real power in Boston. I am again asking the Board of Selectmen to create an ad hoc committee to address that issue in the coming redistricting that'll happen next year as a result of the, what is it, every census, every 10 year, every 10 years. I proposed this committee, same similar committee, 10 years ago and it was very, well, I shouldn't say it was very effective, it was very active, but was unsuccessful as the political winds were against us. That committee included myself, Sam Poulton, my Democratic partner, John Kirland and Matt Hanson, two Selectmen at the time. We met with our state repster in that period. We also met in Boston with the state legislative leaders in Boston who all agreed that Chelmsford was very unfairly treated in the year 2000 by splitting us up four ways. However, in the end, all the legislative leaders did nothing. Sadly, we still have the four reps and as far as I'm concerned, no real voice in Boston. As I am now 80 years old and unsure of where our new home will be next year, I will not volunteer for that committee. However, I will be willing to appear before the committee to give my ideas or thoughts as to what happened 10 years ago. At the end of my discussion, I will leave you a copy of the letter that I sent to Paul Cohen 10 years ago indicating the results of our meeting, or results of our committee That committee, or the new committee, should strive to get our single state rep back. The states, the facts have now changed a little bit in our favor. We now have a Republican governor who would be more favorable to Chelmsford and our population growth, I think, may force some other changes that will be needed. I think Chelmsford has probably grown more so than some of the local towns and cities. The committee, the committee should strive to get our single rep back. The facts have now changed. As I said, we now have a Republican governor. And again, while we should strive for a single rep, we should also be willing to compromise for no more than two. I'm reminded, I'm reminded of a not-so-famous saying by Teddy Roosevelt, not the one everybody remembers of, "Speak softly and carry a big stick," but one of the comment he made, he indicated his frustration with legislators who proposed the perfect law as far as they were concerned and ended up with exactly nothing. And I relate two recent examples of that. This past year, one was the state question on the ballot about hospital staffing and the second one was about the fire station and ambulance in the town's town meeting last year. While both of them had some merits, as far as I was concerned, they went too far and they ended up achieving nothing. So, again, I'm asking the committee, or telling the committee or telling the Selectmen, we can easily achieve two districts within the state. And that we proposed 10 years ago to the state legislators and obviously they did nothing. But by taking Nagel, taking one of his Chelmsford, taking his sole Chelmsford district away from him and trading it with Mr. Golden, you now have Mr. Golden with four Chelmsford reps, about 15,000 residents out of 40, 41,000, a little bit more than 40 percent. Mr. Osiero can swap his Littleton district or his Littleton town to the Concord rep and that would end up with five precincts in Chelmsford, in his district. Okay, and that would be about 19,000 citizens. And these are numbers based on the 2010 census. And that would give him, that would give us about 50, oh, excuse me, a little less than 50 percent of Osiero's district. And again, this can be accomplished with no domino effect across the state. Again, this is just swapping districts within our local area. That would get us the two reps and with potentially a Chelmsford citizen actually having a chance of representing the town of Chelmsford. Also, I asked the committee that they should look into the Chelmsford State Senate District. That's something that we did not look into last year. I think it's crazy that Chelmsford is with Waltham Senate District. You know, Waltham and Chelmsford have very little in common and yet Westford is with the Lowell District or the Lowell Senate District. So, again, I think something should be pushed as to why it's, and I assume would be better off having the Lowell Rep, the Lowell Senator representing Chelmsford along with Westford and the other towns. So, again, Chelmsford being part of West, I mean, part of Waltham, that's crazy, but that's politics. That's, that's the way the powers put it to be many years ago. These are my parting thoughts. Hope you'll act on them. And I will, I resurrected a copy of the letter that I sent to Paul Cohen. I'm sure you have it in the record, but I'll give you a copy. And that shows you the setup of the districts of 10 years ago.
Thank you.
And how the four districts were put together and shows the swap and it shows the thing that we, the switch of the two reps so that we'd end up with two reps in the town of Chelmsford. It shows how that can be easily accomplished. There is some issues with it. Golden may not appreciate losing one of his precincts north of the Merrimack River, but again, you know, it's a possibility. So, again, I thank the Chelmsford, all of you, the reps, the Town Manager, the Selectmen, School Committee for giving the Regazio family a good 50 years and we will be saying farewell. We may come back. I'm not certain where my wife and I are gonna end up, but we want to thank you all. So, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good luck, Paul.
Question, Paul. What year are you in as a town meeting rep at this point? Are you in your first?
I think I'm in my, I think this is the end of my second year.
So, you have, theoretically, you have time to go.
I theoretically have one year left, so if, but that depends upon when the house is sold, so.
Sure.
It's on the market right now, so it.
Let me just say thank you for all the town meeting members. Your voice is gonna sorely be missed at the meetings. You always brought wisdom and common sense and sometimes we're a little short on that note. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just because you guys are both in Somerville, that's why.
Yeah.
We're kind of cousins, sort of, through marriage.
Good old Somerville. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time to present this to you and as I said, I'll be, I have all my, as a retired CPA accountant, I have all my records of 10 years ago. Be glad to share them, whatever the committee is that you put together because I think it's important for the town of Chelmsford to get at a minimum of two reps and one, hopefully one, so, thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Anyone else like to speak on any matter tonight?
Debbie Derry, Precinct 6 rep. I'm here this evening. I spoke to most of the selectmen except for Pat. I listened to your last meeting and I did see on your agenda that there's someone from the state that was coming above the trucks, but you weren't sure, so I decided to come this evening. So, I will proceed with what I'd like to propose. I've lived in my home on Stemmon Street for 43 years. It'll be 44 in May. And what I, it's been an increase in traffic and an increase of trucks. Now, I know we cannot eliminate trucks on Stemmon Street. It's not a state road, but that's the link to the city of Lowell. And because of the way the roads are linked, they cannot take North Road, they cannot go beyond Chelmsford Street underpass Route 3 on Chelmsford Street into Lowell by state law, that I'm aware of. There's really no other place for them to go but Stemmon Street. And it seems though we're getting more and more trucks and they are shaking our homes. Actually, you know when a truck is going by. And it isn't just the trucks. It is the speed in which they are driving. In my area, visually, I have seen a car go into a front porch a few years ago. My daughter was in a car and passenger a few years ago that went into a house, three houses down from me, into the house. Cindy Morris died. She was hit in front of my home. A few months ago, there was a car that was flipped sideways on my street on a Sunday afternoon between 1:00 and 1:30, broke the pole and the pole was holding the car up. Of course, we all lost electricity. But what I would like to see, or what I am proposing, is I had heard about the signs in Main Street where the flashing lights to be put on to Stemmon Street and decrease the 30 speed limit to 25. Because I think if we could put it as 25 as opposed to leaving at 30, we might get people to drive 30. I had an accident in front of my home a while ago with a van that was only six months old and I had my direction alarm because I wandered backward in the driveway. 4:00 on a sunny afternoon like today, I was hit from behind heading for the phone pole that says 30 and I got pushed to my neighbor's driveway. That's how fast he was driving. They estimate at least 45 miles an hour. I pulled that wheel so I wouldn't hit that telephone pole, but they thought I lived next door. I still have a bone sticking on my wrist from that accident. Before something else happens, and I have a lot of neighbors that have left, that have sold their homes, we have a lot of new children on our street, I would like to see the traffic slow down at least. And maybe, just maybe, if we reduce the speed from, on Stemmon Street itself, maybe people decide to stay maybe on the highway. It would be very nice because I know people are coming from Nashua to go to Bedford and they're taking Stemmon Street, which seems a little strange. People from Athune are taking Stemmon Street. And the other thing that I should bring up right now is at the end of the street, when you're on Chelmsford Street, in that intersection, I call it road rage. It is not made for two lanes when you go down. In order to have two cars side by side, one car on the left needs to go over the yellow line. Now, I don't know if you've ever sat at that intersection very long, but the cars that come from Chelmsford Street, they fly. And I don't know how many times I got hit. No, I would just refuse to pull over. So, people are very unhappy about that. I would really like a sign saying it's a single file because maybe that would slow them down too. They're just going faster and faster as time goes on. It's just a straightaway. And that's where a lot of the accidents have occurred, between Chelmsford Street and Dalton Road. That section of roadway is either it stopped or they're flying. I had somebody say to me yesterday, they couldn't come this evening, that he witnessed, and I hear this all the time about the bus drivers, because I hear the horn and say, oh, the kids are getting off the bus, that the cars are driving so fast they can't stop for the bus. And it's happening more and more and you hear the beeping of the horn from the bus and I say, oh, the bus is out there. I will bring up while I'm here because I had, I thought they changed it when Brett was going to school. There was a bus stop at 7 Stemmon Street. It's at the corner. It's on the right-hand side as you're going up. And when that bus stop in the afternoon drops off the children, the traffic on Chelmsford Street, Golden Cove, it all stops. The middle of the intersection is completely stopped. And I had looked at this before because they wanted Brett to walk down the street. And I had called the bus company and said it's an illegal bus stop. It's less than 100 feet from a major intersection. And so, they allowed Brett to continue taking the bus where he'd been taking it. I, so I didn't pay much attention to what was going on down the street anymore because as he got older, it was different buses. But that elementary bus is in the street sometimes and the street is all blocked, which is really an unsafe situation. And I'm bringing it up now because I had called, I thought I took care of my child at the time and they rectified it, but it's still going on. And it is a very dangerous situation when you have the whole intersection stopped. Now, I won't even tell you about the accidents that happened in Chelmsford Street and Golden Cove and that area there because there's just too many. It happens, you never know. One week, we had three within a 24-hour period. You just don't know. But I am asking you all, I know from when it was presented to town meeting to reduce the speed to 25 miles an hour throughout the town, nobody wanted it. It was voted down. I am not asking for that. I am asking for one area, one street in this town that has the link to the city of Lowell and that is the reason why the bridge, when they redid the bridge between the city of Lowell and the town of Chelmsford, they didn't do what they did on North Road. They closed it completely down. And they closed it completely down because of time constraints. They did it quicker. So, it wasn't, it was a shorter period of time to quote, to finish it. And that's what they did because our street is a major lane to the city of Lowell. So, we can't eliminate the trucks, but maybe we could slow them down. And I wouldn't, I, sometimes I do see a police officer near the elderly housing, but that isn't a straightaway. That isn't where we're getting the speed. I don't know about accidents down that way, but I know down my way what happens, what's occurring. And like I said, it's gonna be 44 years in May. I've seen it all. The mule man, he finally gave up the route, he got hit so many times. I've seen just about all I want to see and it's the continuation of this traffic, this speed. I'm afraid somebody else might get killed and I don't want to see that happen.
Well, Debbie, thank you for your comments. I don't know if you noticed, but Chief Spinney is here tonight and he was making copious notes during your whole presentation. So, I think he's gonna look into it and see if we can come up with a better solution.
I know the board has, you have the right in your power, you have the power to do this.
Do we have the power to reduce speed on one particular street?
No, no.
Not for one street?
No, any speed limits are regulated by the state speed law and then we have to submit a petition by a 95 percentile of actual traffic on the roadway to establish a speed limit. So, that's how it is across the Commonwealth, not just in Chelmsford.
Okay.
But it begins with an investigation by.
That's correct, by the police.
By the police department.
All right.
And we'll see that that happens.
And I really would appreciate that because like I said, it just seems to be getting out of control. But I knew that state, it's not a state road per se. But he did mention it that evening at town meeting that we could do this, so I'm bringing it forward. I thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak tonight?
Good evening. My name is Sandy Mazurczek. I live at 5 Aberdeen Road in Chelmsford. I don't know if Chelmsford pays Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission, Inc., $1,900 every year to receive certification accreditation status without adhering to policy and procedures defined by that entity. Chief Spinney is the main offender of that policy. He habitually keeps breaking it. Others in any department follow his example. I informed manager, Town Manager, Mr. Cohen and his board about these violations in my complaint dated April 7, 2018. Deputy Ahorn unequivocally determined that failing to adhere to his policies and procedures should result in loss of accreditation. I'm here to make sure that the town stops funding that program. The town shouldn't fund programs glorifying unaccountable cops. The Town Manager, Mr. Cohen, has been crickets regarding Chief Spinney's violations that I've raised many times for many years. The board needs to act about that. Your silence emboldens Mr. Cohen in his defense of incompetent and unethical cops. Chief Spinney is one of them. Thank you.
Can I just get a clarification, excuse me, can I just get a clarification of what the violations are for? What are the violations?
Ms. Gibbs, I sent you numerous emails.
Okay.
I can give you copies of what I sent you.
That's all right. I just wanted to be, get it clarified.
My recollection of those emails is that it is procedural. You are looking for records and you are looking for information on emails and communications. So, I am still unclear on what the actual violations of code are.
Have you read my emails?
I have.
And you're not sure? Do you have, you don't know what the code is?
This is the end of my first year. I have received probably 20 emails. I'm talking, please.
I understand Chief Spinney is here.
Right, and I will ask him and I have some questions that I've written down, but I want specifically, apart from did not return an email to you, many of them are documentation requests. Outside of all of this, what was the, what was the start, what was the initial event that led to all of these request demands that lead you to believe that he is incompetent and corrupt? If those are the, if those are the requests for documents, I have those. I have saved them all.
No, these are not. Can't be so. My request.
Yes, but these are based on accreditation. I'm still looking for what specifically is the action that demonstrates incompetence and corruption.
It's on the back page.
Thank you.
Paul, the accreditation process.
Yes.
How often is it, I assume that like any accreditation process, there is a review process by an external auditing company? Okay, great.
Yeah, it is a Massachusetts Police Accreditation.
The Massachusetts Police Accreditation Company?
Committee.
Committee. The Massachusetts Police Accreditation Committee reviews our police department. How often?
I think it's every three years.
So, every three years, we get a full audit?
Yes.
Now, having gone through multiple accreditations for school systems, and I know that they won't be the same, but there must be many parallels. Those are every 10 years. If they are going through it every three years, that is a lot of close record-keeping because there is, you know, in a 10-year span, you can, you can, you can lose a lot of, you can trim a lot of documents, but in a three-year span, it's really hard to not be very meticulous with your record-keeping. So, I would imagine this process is fairly rigorous?
It is, and it's a voluntary process. Not every community has an accredited or.
So, there is no requirement. This is something that we say, we think we are this good, we would like this certification because we believe that our procedures fit these higher standards.
Exactly.
So, every three years, how long have we maintained this accreditation?
The first step was certification.
Okay.
And that was the initial foray into it.
Do you remember when that was?
Oh, I think it's a decade ago.
Man, did we just recertify, reaccredited for the third time.
The third time, so it's three times for reaccredited and then certification was before that, right? So, altogether, it's about 10 years.
And we just did it in 2018, right?
Right. Yeah.
So, you've got.
I have some records.
I'm just getting through this list of notes. So every, every, so we have gone through essentially four levels of this process. We have been recertified three times, and then there was that initial fact.
It began under Chief Murphy. I attended, and I think Pat, you were there. We attended the first certification, certification recognition, and then we also attended the first certification, I'm sorry, first accreditation recognition as well. So you're going back six or so years ago, and then as Chief mentioned, twice since then, we've been reaccredited.
So this is under two different chiefs?
Yes.
Two different administrators for the police department?
Yes.
And we have continued to maintain this level of certification, which is...
Accreditation.
Accreditation, which is, which is more rigorous.
Yes.
Held to more rigorous standards.
I have some handouts regarding that matter, recertification. I, as I mentioned, I essentially was about that.
They're all in a folder.
Well, just to make sure. I didn't know that.
Thank you.
You wanted to hear me, but I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
So in closing, I'd like you to act on it and make sure you hold that man and his department accountable for discretions. I don't think the department has ever followed those. I have records, if you want, indicating that. It's been since, at least I know, 2008, that they have not followed those policies and procedures to the letter of that particular entity, meaning complying with their policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight?
Members of the board, good evening. I debated speaking at all, but in light of some of the comments that were just made, I feel it necessary to do so. My name is Jim Spinney, I'm the police chief. Let me first start by saying I'm offended by what was said earlier by the prior speaker. I have dedicated 29 years of my professional life to serving as a law enforcement officer, and I consider myself unquestionable integrity and level of professionalism. And I'll also say that about the men and women I work with. I think it's, I think we can all agree that if the police department was such a rogue entity as the prior speaker has suggested, I think I'd be at this podium a lot more, answering a lot more questions from this community. I'm going to be brief. I'm simply going to say, I invite any member of this board, any member of the community for that matter, to come to the police facility and review any email, any document, any request, any complaint with regards to the prior speaker. These documents are all public record, and I encourage you to do this because it would not take you long at all before it would be very quickly apparent what the police department has been dealing with for the last seven years with regards to this prior speaker. I think it's worth noting that I and my staff have reached out on numerous occasions to the prior speaker and requested he come to the police station to discuss anything that's bothered him about anything. This all stems from a neighbor dispute some seven years ago. That's what this all started with. I have offered to go to the subject's house. I attempted to go to the subject's house one time, which resulted in him filing a civilian complaint against me for the very mere fact of attempting to do that. And that brings us to the crux of the problem. The prior speaker's issue is that I refuse to investigate complaints, and I do refuse. I will not subject my personnel to internal investigations with regards to frivolous, baseless complaints. Every policy has to have a level of common sense. And when I receive an email that someone wants to file a civilian complaint against a member of me or a member of my staff because we drove by his house, or that I went to his door and knocked on it, I'm sorry, that's not being investigated. And I will not investigate that. This has turned into a very systematic game. And with everything going on in town, way more important things that was talked about with traffic. The things going on in this community, I don't have time for the games, and I will not subject myself or my staff to these types of complaints. And that's the bottom line. With regards to accreditation, it cost the town $1,900 for us to remain in the accreditation system, and that money goes towards the accreditation program to help with training. They offer trainings around the state for our staff. That's what the $1,900 goes to. So I welcome anyone to meet with myself or a member of my staff to review any of this. Of course, I'm always available if you want to give me a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, I just want to say too, thanks for standing up and saying, you know, speaking. I'm glad you did tonight. And you know I've stopped in on police station unannounced frequently. I've never seen any issues, anytime somebody even tells me they have a run-in with a police officer in Chelmsford, I ask them, how did it go, what was it like? Never complain about rude or any of that type of stuff, so.
And when I receive a complaint, they're investigated. But when I receive some of these complaints that I've received, they're not complaints. They're quite frankly forms of harassment to get the police department to spin its wheels, and I'm not going to do it. I'd much rather focus my time on Steben Street with resources to keep the community safe. I answer to the manager, he answers to you. I'm always at any of yours beck and call with regards to any issue in town. Again, I don't want to repeat myself. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak tonight? All right. We have some committee vacancies.
So we have one open seat for the CCA Advisory Committee, four for the Civic Committee, one for Community Action Program Committee. We are looking for four for the Council on Aging, up to 21 for the Cultural Council, three open seats in the Energy Conservation Committee, three for the Holiday Decorating Committee, two for the Middlesex Canal Commission. We're looking for all applicants for the Parade Committee, one volunteer for the Personnel Board, five for the Public Celebrations Committee, three open seats for the Sign Advisory Committee, two for the State Park, Skate Park Committee. If you're interested in serving on any of the town boards just mentioned, please apply to the town website or contact the town manager's office at 978-250-5201. Thanks.
I'd just like to mention something. I think all of us got that email this week from the Mass Cultural Council about...
Yes, it was from the... Oh, is that what you're talking about?
About what?
Go ahead.
That we need to have a minimum number of members on that council in order to continue to qualify for actions from them, and I think we only have four, and we need to have five or something like that. We need to have at least one more. So reaching out to the community, if you're interested in cultural activities in town, sign up. It's not a lot of heavy lifting.
Do you have examples of some of the things that the Cultural Council does so that people have a better understanding?
I have never been to one of their meetings, but I know they help with some of the, like Winterfest and other activities like that that we have on the common. They, a few years ago, were helping out, were trying to help out, I think with the Center Village Improvement Committee as far as the signage and facades and things like that. So anything that has to do with cultural activities, they work a lot with the CCA Advisory Committee, so anything having to do with culture, they're out there. So like I said, it's definitely a worthwhile committee, and it does bring us grants from the state. And you don't need to have a lot of, you don't need to have any experience in anything, you know, you just meet with the three or four people that are already on that committee. And I guess one of the issues is you can't serve more than so many consecutive terms, or we would have people that would remain on it, but they have to step off, they still advise it, but they're not officially members because they've served their term limit.
I just, I want to say with all of these committees, I, every time somebody asks me about something, I'm like, hey, does that interest you? There's a great committee, you could be on it. And it doesn't, I would actually recommend not doing the committees if that's your day job, because adding on to your day job, it makes it feel longer. But if this is something you're interested in, some of these committees cover interesting activities and interesting areas, and it's a learning opportunity, so. Sounds like we need some more creative people, and I know we have tons in Chelmsford to be on the Cultural Council and make things like Winterfest, and I would imagine the farmer's market would benefit from some of that. Like all, anything, anything that would be public venues would be, would benefit from this, so.
And each of these committees does have their own page on the town website where it gives a little bit more information about what it is they do, so, absolutely.
And you want to join up? I mean, you seem to join all these that have openings.
I got a sucker in my forehead, huh?
Well, maybe, maybe...
Maybe you can go in your Minuteman outfit and...
Maybe a selectman who won't be here next month.
Perhaps. All right, so we have some licenses tonight. We have a change of manager, all alcohol beverage package store, Harrington Wine and Liquors, pending change to Mall Liquors, DBA Lincoln Liquors. Do we have anyone here tonight from them?
Hi, I'm Tracy Donato from Lincoln Liquors in Chelmsford.
Are you going to be the new manager?
Yes.
All right. And were you previously employed at this site, or?
I was, I worked alongside Joe Condon.
All right. And where is he going? Is he just going to another one of the stores?
He's, he's moving up per se.
Within the organization?
Better, within the company, yeah.
Okay. Any questions by any of the members?
So a couple of weeks ago, we approved a name change, and now this is a change of manager. Just want to be clear.
Yep.
Everything else is the same at the store?
Yes.
All right.
You're going to ask about the trains?
Both the what?
The trains.
Oh.
They're not going back up, sorry, guys.
No, we'll be out of here early.
All right. If we find, if we find a nice place in a town building in town, are you going to let them borrow the trains?
I will, I will ask about it. I will look into it.
That sounds like a job for the Cultural Council.
There you go.
Oh.
All right.
Trains, folks, trains.
One volunteer.
What?
They just need one volunteer.
Well, they can use up to, what did you say?
Up to 21.
Yeah, five keeps them alive.
There's plenty of room.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager to the all-alcohol beverage package store license for Harrington Wine and Liquors, Inc. Corporate name changed pending.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have a one-day wine and malt beverage license for St. John's Evangelist Parish. Anyone hear from them tonight? I think we've done this many times. Never been a problem.
I'll vouch for them.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day beer and wine license for St. Patrick's Dinner to be held at St. John's Evangelist Church at 115 Middlesex Street, March 16, 2019.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, aye, vote. Reports and presentations. Like you, we're going to be trying to bring someone in?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, last meeting, you had inquired about truck exclusions, and you asked if I could get someone from the state. I reached out to both Mass DOT and NIMCOG. Justin Howard of NIMCOG, I saw him over in Westford when we went over for their meet and greet, and he'd indicated he wants to do some more traffic studies before he comes in to talk about the area. However, my contact at DOT, Jeff Gomes, has moved from District Four to District Three, and we now have John Gregg in that district. And he was kind enough to say he would be welcome to come in this evening, and he also brought along Rick Wilson in there here this evening to answer any of your questions. In preparation for the meeting, I did form him, John, my most recent traffic presentation from December, as well as some of the counts, and we had a phone conversation to lay the foundation of what's been going on in the Groton Road, Swain, Dunstable Ledge, and Main Street areas. So they're here tonight to talk about the manual and uniform traffic control devices and truck exclusions and any other general questions you may have.
True.
So without further ado, I would welcome John and Rick to come on up.
It's not often we get live ones from the state, and we appreciate it.
Okay. My name's John Gregg, this is Rick Wilson. I work in the District Four office as the Traffic Operations Engineer. Rick is our Regulations Engineer in the Boston office, pretty much covering the entire state, and, you know, obviously knows quite a bit about the truck exclusion process, any questions that you may have. We had looked over the, basically the PowerPoint presentation that Mike, that you had made previously, and understand that the concern appears to be the truck traffic on Ledge Road, and I guess you guys are kind of looking into alternate routes other than what's been kind of used in the past, if I have that correct. You know, we know Ledge Road is pretty much a landlocked roadway, there's only one way out to get over to Dunstable Road, and, you know, from there, I, from what I understand, I guess they're going down Dunstable to the south, taking Swain Road, working their way over to Route 40, is that correct?
Yes, that has been the pattern. And the question that came up from some residents was, could we have a truck exclusion on Swain? And then some residents have also inquired at the intersection of Swain and Groton Road, on the other side is Main Street, and apparently there are trucks that are using the end of Main Street to come up, presumably from South Chelmsford, Westford, other towns to the southwest. So the question is, what could be done in that area?
The townspeople brought up, you know, cries of, what can you do? And we know there are rules in place that you are against. You know, they look at it as just a common sense issue, and we know that sometimes common sense takes a backseat to rules that are in place for valid reasons. And we wanted someone to come in and just kind of explain the rules and what you can, what you can't do, and that kind of thing, so that they understand that we, we're not, you know, making any whim decisions. These are the rules, and the rules apply to everybody. Right. Yeah, essentially, when you talk about excluding a certain street, you have to have a suitable alternate route that the trucks would be able to use. In this particular case, I guess there's been a couple of alternate routes that have been discussed. One, using Dunstable and going further down into Vinyl Square, and the other, using Dunstable to the north to get up to Westford Road and use the Westford Road interchange to get to the highway. The offhand, as Rick and I just kind of, we went out beforehand, aside from looking at the presentation that was made, and, you know, we view the Vinyl Square route as very problematic, obviously. It's got a very sharp turn. I don't think most of the trucks would be able to make that kind of turn, and they may kind of tell you the same thing. Going the other way to the north, I know getting out of Ledge Road itself, that's kind of a sharp turn there too, but it's probably, it may be done today, I'm sure, by some, by some of the truckers. The only issue with the route going north is now it, it's in Chelmsford, it's in Westford, I believe, for a piece, and then Tinsborough. So you've got three communities that are involved in this, so, you know, if you were to encourage the truckers, say, to use that northerly route rather than use the current route they use now, you'd probably need to be getting into discussions with the town of Westford, the town of Tinsborough, so that everybody's in agreement that this is a viable truck route that should be considered, and, you know...
It's definitely a more suitable route. Absolutely is. And we wanted to clear out that corner, take that pole out of there, move the pole, and make it very easy. And I think it'd be better for the truck drivers, to be perfectly honest with you, as well as the citizens.
Have you ever heard of a similar situation in another town?
Yeah, it's happened in the past, where you've had an alternate route that does cross cross from one town into another. And, you know, sometimes it's worked out where the towns have said, yeah, you know, this is the best option that we have for this condition, and they've agreed, you know, to allow the, they, usually they kind of have somewhat of a public meeting, I guess. There's Mass General Law's Chapter 85, Section 2, kind of describes a little bit about, you know, what you need to do for your, you know, in that regard, you know, as far as having a meeting with the town, if it has to be something formal.
They're already coming out of Westford. They're coming out of Westford, going into, down into, you know, they're coming down Ledge Road from Westford.
From Westford into Chelmsford, yes.
So now they're gonna go back to Westford again, what's the difference?
Yeah.
I'm not being wise.
No, no, no.
But I mean, it's, it's, that road is not, a lot less traveled, and there's not very few houses on there.
Yeah.
And a lot less turns. So if we move that corner, if we could get the National Grid to move that big pole there, and go that way, I mean, I, you know...
Is that the common sense of solution, really?
I, I think it is. It's much more suitable, I think, than the Swain Road option, and it's gonna be much more suitable than the Vinyl Square.
Vinyl Square is dead.
You just have to sell it to the town officials of Tingsborough and Westford, and approach them, that you want to maybe, you're looking to establish a regional truck route for these trucks to go to, that might, yeah.
They got Republic up there already, I mean, they got plenty of trucks up there now. I think they're used to that up there, you know what I mean? You're only talking, you're talking about just over a mile, I think. Did you say you clocked it?
Yeah.
It's not that long of a distance.
I think it's closer to two miles the other way, isn't it, to Route 40, to get out, to the on-ramp there?
It's close, yeah, it's pretty close.
You're doing half, you know, half, a less dangerous road, a straight run, and...
Yeah, definitely a better road than Swain.
Sure it is. Well, the square, the square, I forget about it.
But the thing is, you do need a viable alternate route, that's, you can't just have the trucks dead-ended.
Right.
It's commerce.
Exactly, I mean, we, we understand that, but sometimes people don't understand that.
So it's a requirement that we approach Tingsborough, Westford with this?
If you're gonna propose an alternate route on another community's roadways, you would need their blessings.
Let's say that they get deranged and agree to it. What's the next step after that?
You know, sure. You just have to find another alternate route, I guess, but...
Well, if there's this alternate route, and the other towns agree to it, we can't just go and do it, throw up some signs, and say you can't go this way. There must be some official channel to do that.
Yeah, you submit documentation, there's in the Massachusetts Amendments to the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, that's kind of our bible of traffic controls across the state. There's a whole process outlined in there, there's traffic counts that get submitted, and I understand there's been quite a few counts taken already, so I believe we already have that information. It shows the breakdown of the various classifications of vehicles. So you've got, you know, two, two-axle trucks, all the way up to, you know, big semi trucks, things like that, it's all broken down, classified. So that gets submitted, along with any details on the roadways themselves, the roadway that you want excluded, and the, and the alternate route itself. You know, the width of the roadway, the condition of the pavement, if there's any crash history, that's worth noting in the, in the submission. You know, any other, any other, you know, design parameters or things, maybe there's a lot of curves on the road that you want to exclude. You know, Swain Road itself is a, is a pretty narrow residential street. As we drove down it, it's, you know, it's pretty amazing that...
It's a tough ride, it's a tough road.
The residents are really upset about it.
Sure they are.
It wasn't built as a truck route.
Yeah.
So, so let me pose the question this way. If, if Westford allows in an asphalt plant, but then says to the asphalt plant, you only can have so many trucks come out the main entrance, which is what they did, basically forcing all the trucks out the back entrance, and they have to come through Chelmsford. Isn't that, in essence, setting up a truck route?
I'm not aware of where the plant is, or...
So the plant's in Westford, and the main entrance is in Westford.
Left turn only, which comes right into Chelmsford, within 300 yards, 200 yards.
I'm not aware of this.
There's an entire parcel of land right there that is up for redevelopment, and we're trying to figure out how to zone that, and I can tell you right now that the committee looking at that is trying to figure out if there are any loopholes that would let the asphalt plant just run a road right through.
Well, let's not confuse, though, I mean, I just want to...
But it's, it's that, it's that issue that has caused all of this wondering, because, because Westford essentially told them to take the bulk of their traffic through Chelmsford.
See, I'm not, we weren't aware of this.
Yeah, so they, so basically you have an asphalt plant on the line of Chelmsford.
A lot of history that you're not aware of, too.
Their main, their main front door exit is in Westford, on Route 40, but, but in order for that to get, I guess, the planning board there to permit it, they said the most amount of trucks to come out a day is X. The rest of your trucks have to go out the back, which is Ledge Road. So it, there's no turns off it, there's no other way, it dumps them all right into Chelmsford. So in my mind, that's setting up a track, a truck route, without asking for consideration from Chelmsford.
Now, they're coming from Ledge Road?
Well...
You said Ledge, I thought Ledge was the dead end.
What's the specific address? Do you have an map that you could broadcast up here? I figured this was a springboard popper.
I told you, we don't get live ones very often, we like to grill them.
We have so many questions, how long do you have?
Okay. In this, would be this area here is gonna be an asphalt plant, and they're asking all trucks just to come in and go right back out this way. It was part of a settlement agreement that was reached when they sued over the construction of the site, including the asphalt plant. They don't restrict truck flow generally, but it's just a condition of their permit that they have to come in and out.
Well, that's, that's Route 40, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Well, that's a numbered route, and we don't allow truck restrictions on numbered routes.
Right.
Except for Route 4 in Chelmsford, which, that was a special case.
It was a long time ago.
And, yeah.
So is it the back, so if they, would they want folks to go out the backside of the plant?
It's very sensitive about the Route 3.
So Mike, can you, can you go up on that and draw it?
Yeah, zoom it out, and then we can show you right where it is.
How do we lose this?
Hang on, hang on. Yep. Bring it in.
It's right about where my pointer is, right in here is where the asphalt plant.
So the trucks are coming out, incoming out Ledge Road up there? No, go up?
How they're going out this way?
They're coming through the Ledge Road, they're coming through the asphalt property and out Ledge Road, right?
No. That's two different situations.
Oh.
Is that right? Hold on here.
No, I got it, I'm not looking at the map right.
So now you can see, I'll step forward and show you. This is an older satellite photo, because there's been significant development. This is a forum, this is a granite quarry in here. The asphalt plant, Newport Materials has bought this site, but they also bought property up here, and they have internal roadways that they're utilizing. The asphalt trucks can only come in and out the front entrance, and they're capped at 200, 200 trucks a day, and when they exit, they can only turn left and go back towards Route 3. But they said they will not put any limitation on any trucks coming or going to the back of the property via Ledge Road. So they now own a contiguous parcel of land that's all situated in Westford, but only has access via Chelmsford, through Ledge Road here, and through Chelmsford via Route 40 here.
So they have a de facto truck route.
It's the only one they have.
I didn't know there was a roadway connecting, because I'm looking at a similar image.
It's a driveway.
It's essentially a long driveway, it's a...
Private driveway.
...with gravel road all the way down.
And does it go onto Route 3?
It does go onto Route 3. When they constructed Route 3, they purposely created an underpass for the gravel to the court.
That was, yeah, to get to the quarry, yeah.
So they're forcing all the trucks out that way?
I wasn't aware of this.
Well, if you want to look at it, it's the only way they can get out.
Does that change what you were just saying, now that you are aware of this?
I'm not sure right now, I'd have to look into it, whether that's our department, or maybe it's a legal type thing, I'm not sure. It seems the business is back there. Property at the end of Ledge Road is in Westford, correct?
Up the top, yeah.
Yeah, and there's three businesses, not just Newport Materials, there's two other businesses up there as well.
Interesting.
It is, it's creating a fascinating set of overlay problems. Well, challenges, overlay challenges.
See, my feeling, my feeling on it is, if they're restricting out the front, enforcing the three businesses, well, because the roads become more popular at the back, because more trucks are now using it, is my guess.
So may I ask, who set the restriction out that Route 40? Was that the town of Westford?
Yes.
Yes.
Because Route 40 at the front of the plant is in Westford.
It was a part of Superior Court case.
And they require them to turn left out of, out of the plant.
Yeah, they can't go right into Westford, they have to go left to the highway.
It goes back to Route 3. Towards Route 3, yeah.
It's like the Hatfields and the McCoys, it's kind of a payback for when...
Graniteville?
We have an aggregate plant on 110, and we made them take a right-hand turn to Westford, so they could get off 495, similar to what I'm trying to do to go through Tingsborough, off Ledge Road, which, to me, it's a simple, a simple solution to that problem, because there's not a lot of trucks, not a lot of houses on that road, it's straight, and it's in a mile.
The trucks are starting out in Westford, and then they're going a short distance, and they're in Chelmsford. We would like them to go back to Westford, and then to the highway.
Then to Tingsborough, then to the highway.
And Tingsborough, but for a short piece.
If I was driving a truck, I'd much rather take that route, to be truthful with you.
And it's a safer route for everyone involved.
How are the lines of communication with the town of Westford?
I don't know, how big a stick do you have?
Oh, no, 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 I think, I think they're okay.
I mean, the town managers reached out on a couple of occasions to, to correct erroneous statements or whatever, so they're, I mean, I...
Oh, you didn't join meetings?
Certainly had very friendly conversations with some of their selectmen. So I, I don't actually know what the long history is, but starting with the more current members, there is no animosity, it's just like, hey, you know, so...
Well, the regional study, which is, wasn't completed in time for tonight, perhaps when that's all put together, maybe the towns can communicate regarding the results of that study, and come to a viable solution together.
When do you think that might be available?
Justin Howard had indicated that they would be starting it up in later spring, most likely when all the snow and ice and everything is off the side of the road, so they can put their boxes out. But he indicated late April, early May they'd be doing them. Plus, he would want to have them done when you're capturing the actual traffic that's going through during construction season, because if you do it now, you're not going to catch a lot of trucks.
It's mostly Tingsborough going up that way, I mean, whatever's, Westford is all landlocked, they don't even provide, I don't even think they provide fire service, although I think Tingsborough handles that, you know.
Let me ask you this, though, so, we have our residents asking us to do something now, this could take, what, three, four months?
Before the study is done, yes.
If you were sitting in our seats, and could think of a Band-Aid method, something that might curb help?
Approach the town of Westford to change that cap of 200 trucks coming out that Route 40. I mean, it's a numbered route, designed for trucks, that's numbered routes of four.
They would have a war over there.
Well, they don't pass many houses.
But the thing is, I, I'd like, I, I don't, I don't understand this, this war thing, this, this eye-for-eye thing just doesn't work, so...
Because it's gonna be asphalt, they're gonna be doing highways, I mean, the pavement for the state.
Paul, who reaches out to whom? Is that selectman, or is that town manager? Can we put this on your plate?
It's whatever the board would prefer.
I think it should be town manager.
So, so can you please reach out to Westford's town manager, and see if we can come to some sort of amicable solution, ignoring past slight wrongs and tit-for-tats?
Or even, could you...
But I understand neither the Westford town manager nor I have the authority.
No, but if you guys have a dialogue, if you have a dialogue, and you can bring it to your boards, then can something...
Even if it's just a short-term, you know, waiver on it, where they say, okay, until the study gets done, we'll take the truck restriction off, just to lighten the burden on Chelmsford.
But the plant's not open, there is no restriction from the asphalt plant.
No, that's true, it's not open yet, that's right.
With all these concerns, and they haven't even opened the asphalt plant.
True, true.
So they can, you can make it a thousand trucks a day if the plant's not open, it doesn't matter.
The biggest problem is Ledge Road, that's the biggest problem. The other problem won't be as much, because it'll be, it'll be done in the evening, like it, after, after midnight mostly. And it'll probably be over at 4:00.
What happens in the event that either Tingsborough or Westford says no? What are our options, and are we allowed to use the alternative route? Does the state intervene on our behalf, and say we have a good case, it should happen, or...
We really can't impose on the city of town on their way to make rules and regulations that they don't want, in that regard.
And if I'm, Mr. Chairman, if I may approach, I also want to point out that triangular-shaped parcel with Main Street, Groton Road, and Lynn Ave.
This area comes up from time to time, it's right underneath you right here. We have an existing, oh, yeah, traffic ex, truck exclusion here on Lynn Ave, but it appears that trucks are coming up from other parts of Chelmsford, Westford, and other communities to the west, to get up to Route 40, presumably to go up to Ledge Road, or because they can't turn onto Route 40 to go this way. So there's some concerns by the residents that, given this interchange here, there's a lot of trucks starting to appear on Main Street. We've requested truck counts, but yet we haven't received them, they're in, going to be part of the truck counts, or traffic counts, I should say, that are going to be done in the spring, but they want to know if there's any alternative. I can bring this back, but unfortunately, Main Street carries all the way down and connects on the other end to Westford, and it also has a feeder street called School Street that comes down into Chelmsford Center. If you want, I can move the map just a little bit to give you an idea.
So is it that this turn right here is, it's not prohibited, it's just difficult to make that turn, is that right?
It's difficult, and there's also trucks that are going straight across Main Street to Swain to get up to the... Main Street's kind of tricky, but as you can see where it says West Chelmsford, that's School Street, otherwise Main Street continues right on into Nab Nassit.
A lot of families on Main Street, through, a few bus stops, school stops along the way.
Again, Main Street comes all the way down here, and then it turns into Westford right here. The only other way would be to try and turn this here, but, actually, you'd have to turn the trucks if they were coming up School Street this way, to avoid them coming up through here. And that, as you may have heard the other resident talk about, this is a straightaway, in this last 12 months, there's been two fatalities at the end of the straightaway, passenger vehicles.
Maybe sometime you could meet somebody and go right up there and take a look at it. I don't know if that's what you do, but if it is, somebody'd be happy to meet you up there.
I mean, we can, you know, we can deal with Mike if that's okay, or, you know, if we need to meet out in the field, whatever, take a, take a ride, check things out.
More than happy to accommodate you.
Might be better if you're at Gwinna Quarry as well, where the, where the asphalt plant's gonna be, and where the aggregate operation is, and see that they cannot join together, or at least that's the opinion of most people, and maybe you people, I don't think you could move anything less than a pickup truck from one end to the other, it's just, it's, you know, Quarry Hall, and then you gotta go around the mountain, and whatever.
So that, going out back this way, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Is that, yeah.
So George, are you saying that those three businesses aren't connected? I've never been up in the quarry, so...
What do you mean by connected?
You said it's, it's pickup truck wide. Are you saying that, that they can't get through there, or...
They come down Ledge Road, I mean, they come, you mean, there's Newport Graves...
In La Masure.
In La Masure, yeah. Yeah, but they all have to come out Ledge Road, there's no way they can get to the other side with any kind of a load on a truck, any, any size truck at all, I mean...
When you say the other side Route 40?
Yeah, to come out to, to Route 40 entrance, and that, you know, with the...
Got it.
With the 200 truck...
Restriction is, because of the quality of the roads back there, they can't get out front.
Go up and take a look.
Okay. I always thought it was privately, and I didn't...
But doesn't matter, I mean, I'm sure they'd, you know, if you can help them...
Doesn't matter, just drive across it, George.
You can let them know, they, you know...
George sent them?
They have no problem.
Just tell them you're on the Cultural Council, just investigating.
Just tell them who you are.
Put a sign in your truck.
George's friend?
George sent me.
If, if you notice from this, this map, I'll just toggle between the other one, you don't see the construction in the middle here, this is a newer map, you can actually see in this area that there's been some clearing, and there are some roads that will bring you down through into the, the area that fronts on Groton Road.
I'll have you drive a truck then, I want to watch you.
Oh, I know you can't, and then I was told you can only get through with an articulated bed.
So, does the same company own both quarries?
The one aggregate company and, and the asphalt plant, it'll be owned by people that are connected with each other. Then there's two other aggregate areas up there that are owned by other individuals, not, not related to the, the larger one. Well, I shouldn't say the larger one, I, I've heard Graves is larger than Newport, so I don't know, I mean, I...
So, there's three separate owners up there?
Yeah.
I don't know who owns which piece of land and how they're connected, I just know there's three up there.
Curious as to why they would allow all those trucks coming from the Newport site to run up through their property to use Ledge Road?
They have to give them a, they have to give them a right of way.
Well, in, in the long, theoretically, in the long run, if they can sell more than 200 trucks a day of work, they need a way to get them out. So, in the long run, the road that goes all the way up there could be improved enough that they could have trucks run out the back end.
Because the asphalt...
And they have no limitation.
Yeah, they're, they're buying the aggregate.
There is a prohibition in the agreement that asphalt is not supposed to go out the back, and there's video monitoring, but they're not precluded from moving aggregate back and forth, so...
Well, they need it for the mix, so they're going to have the aggregate there.
That's, you know, Selectman Dixon is correct, my understanding is they bought the quarry so that they can get the rock for the asphalt, so they'll be moving trucks in and out that way, but the, the people purchasing asphalt will only be coming in and out the front on Groton Road.
Their aggregate business probably will cease once the asphalt plant is, because they'll need all, if, if you're going to give out 200 loads of asphalt a day, you're going to need a lot of, uh, stone, you know?
I guess ideally it would be good if this was all approved, and they had some type of agreement, and everybody came out here regardless of the 200 vehicle restriction, because you get an interchange, you have a numbered route and an interchange right here.
We discussed this morning, it would be ideal to have a separate road coming out that way.
Well, ideally...
You've got to take a look at it before you do much discussion.
Really, so, well, in approved roadway as well?
I understand.
Well, yeah, to get what George is saying, ideally, if you could get, I think it's three landowners total, to agree and run a road right up opposite the off-ramp on Route 3, straight into the aggregate.
You get some one-land crossings and you get...
Basically, run it right up Route 3, the next, the side of Route 3.
Let's be honest, it would, so you'd have to, I don't know, be pretty expensive.
Yeah, it would be expensive, but think about it, if someone came off Route 3 or on Route 3 on that off-ramp and went straight across and right up Route 3, the side of Route 3, 10 feet off of Route 3, right into the...
Only they had some stone and asphalt in the area to build roads with.
I know.
Well, you've given us some food for thought, that maybe there's a way to work with it. If not, your cars may not be outside tonight, they may be, maybe a long walk.
Threaten our guests.
One last question before we leave, though, you seem hesitant when we talked about the restriction on Route 40 and the 200 trucks coming out of the asphalt plant, and you had sort of made a comment that you can't restrict on a numbered road.
We don't, we don't have, we don't restrict trucks from numbered routes.
So, can you check on that a little bit, to make sure that restriction is viable for Westford?
I don't, yeah, I will check on that, I don't, I don't think I have anything on file regarding that. And, I mean, that's part of the Surface Transportation Act. You're allowed to go at least a mile from the national network on a, on a route like Route 40 to reach a destination or origin of work, or service, or whatever, so that would follow the U.S. code, to be honest with you.
Which makes it more difficult to shut down on anything within a mile, is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
I can supply you the documentation that I have relative to that exclusion, the settlement agreement that went along with the permit.
Careful what we ask for.
Well, again, thank you, and thanks, Mike, for bringing the men. I hope that we've had some people at home watching who questioned what we can do, what we can't do. All right, town manager reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just three items under my report this evening. The first one is a referral response from a previous meeting. Selectman LaFabe requested a copy of the town's vehicle inventory, and my administrative assistant, Christina Bruce, has produced for you a copy of the town vehicle inventory by department, manufacturer and model of vehicle, and which vehicles are taken home.
Thank you. So, is this list all vehicles that are currently owned by the town?
That's my understanding, yes, yes, and we cross-reference that from our insurance list. What, what isn't on that list are vehicles that are, for example, I don't believe the police forfeiture vehicles are on there, and some other miscellaneous vehicles of that type, but, but in, but in essence, you know, the fleet pool for this building is on there, under DPW, which lies that fleet pool. You've got Board of Health, you've got the Building Department, you've got the Cable Access Corporation's vehicles, the Cemetery vehicles, Council on Aging vehicles, and as a DPW, Fire, and, and Police, and, and the few that the School Department has, I don't believe there's anything else.
Paul, the two Town Office motor pool, Ford Fusion, what are those?
Those are Ford Fusion vehicles, one's a hybrid and one's an electric vehicle. They're usually parked in the back, the two black vehicles that you often see in the parking lot in the back.
They go on the weekends.
They stay in the lot, or if there's a severe storm, winter storm, DPW retrieves the vehicles and puts them down at DPW. But they're, they're, they are housed in, onsite or in DPW at all times, there, there's no take-home of those vehicles.
So, there's like almost 200 vehicles? It seems like a lot of vehicles.
Well, we, we...
Big town.
The big town, at the, the big operation.
A lot of them are DPW equipment.
Yeah, a few things, I mean, if you go through this and you cross off fire pumper trucks, emergency boats for the police and the fire, sweet strippers, drain cleaner, things like that.
There's several or numerous utility trailers on this, quite a few departments.
You really whittle this, you're not going to sit there and say, well, you know, why would the DPW have a cat four-wheel loader? I mean, they need a cat four-wheel loader, so, I mean, some of these, and it's not going to be like, you know, each guy's on one.
All passenger vehicles, yeah.
Right.
Well, I just mean in relation to if the average person sitting at home and they hear 200 vehicles, you go, where are they all?
Thirty-five thousand.
That kind of thing.
Well, I will say this to anybody at, at home listening, Paul gave me the list, I called three or four departments and spoke to them, and questioned them on the list, and the last one I had outstanding were the two that were parked at the town offices because they weren't there last weekend, and Paul's answer was they moved them during a storm, so...
Yeah, I mean, they...
I mean, I did scour this pretty thoroughly.
They came and collected the vehicles the day of the storm, brought them on DPW for clearing the lot purposes.
You know, you could sit there and say, well, the Fire Department has 21 employees, there's a lot of pickup trucks, but I think a couple of those are the bigger emergency pickup trucks, the F-350s. So, you know, when I knock those off, it really, you got the five that, the Fire Prevention Captain, the Fire Mechanic, the Deputy Jeep, so they, they're all attributable, I mean, I tried to find some waste here.
It looks like the only places would be, maybe the Sewer Department, where they sew away and go home. I mean, if they have a, if they have a break, I mean...
I, I'll tell you, if my sewer breaks, I don't want to wait for them to have to come in on Monday morning and get the keys to a truck.
How far do they go, some of them are towed, some of them go as far as Waltham and places like that, you know, I don't know.
But in my quarries with, you know, people who had kind of called me and said, hey, there's a lot of trucks in town, somebody asked me about dash cams, do any of our vehicles have dash cams?
No.
The police cruisers would?
No, police cruisers do not have dash cams.
Okay.
We don't have body cams either.
Okay.
So, do we pay for the gas for all these vehicles?
Yes, the, the fueling island is over at the deep, is over at the police station.
I see it all the time.
Yeah.
Do we buy it at a discount, we don't mark it up?
Yeah, we market, buy it through a state bid contract.
And we just renewed the bid, and we got a new contractor who we've used in the past. The most recent contractor, the, the police and DPW had some issues with deliveries and, and customer service. We have somebody that they dealt with in the past, they prefer, and we got a better rate, so...
But typically, do we pay per gallon?
If you give me a minute, I can pull it up, but we...
That's a rough idea, you don't have to be exact.
We get a significant discount.
The chief can tell you, he, he does the billing.
Oh, he came back.
Two dollars and 30 cents a gallon.
Two dollars and 30 cents a gallon.
Yeah, that's the average for 2018, the last couple installments have creeped up into the high 230s, but 2018, the average was two dollars.
2018, the average was $2.30 for those at home who can't hear in the back of the car.
Yeah, we, we don't pay federal sales tax, but we do pay state, believe it or not. The state has never seen it fit to waive cities and towns of the state motor vehicle excise tax.
So, we don't, we don't, we don't pay excise tax?
No, but we pay...
To ourselves.
No, but we pay it to the state.
We do.
Yeah, you know, when you go to the fuel pumps and says, how much is federal tax, how much is state tax? We're, the federal tax is waived, but we pay the state tax.
So, you don't get a, an excise tax bill, I think?
Right, we don't get an excise tax bill, but we do pay the gas tax.
So, just to be clear, though, all gasoline going at any vehicle in town gets done out of the police station?
Yes.
So, I have to tell you...
I, I pay less than...
Diesel, all diesel comes?
Diesel.
But it's diesel.
Oh, where does the diesel come from?
I'm sorry, yeah, we get billed for all gas except diesel, but all fueling is done at the BD, correct?
Yeah, because for anybody who doesn't know, my office stares at the pumps, and, you know, I sit there, oh, Engine 1's filling up again, but I would think with this many vehicles, like, there'd be a constant flow out of that gas station, and there's really not.
It wasn't always the case, we used to have a separate fueling island at DPW, and then that's never, that's, that's one phase of the DPW facility in Alpha Road we've never achieved, was it having fuel?
But my point is, I don't see a lot of cars going in and out of that, that pump station, so, I mean...
Yeah, because they're not all running at once, obviously, there's, you know...
The diesels, they, they do, if they're, they start them, they, you know, run all day anyway.
Yeah, but I'm really kind of surprised that it's not the traffic I would have thought, you know?
So, what would someone do if they had a town car and they had it at their house and mall for them, and they looked down and they're almost out of gas, what do they do then?
Well, I imagine if there was an emergency, they could fill it up and we'd reimburse them for their purchase, yeah.
So, do we see many of those reimbursements?
No.
No. Thank you for the list.
So, um, it's not, you don't need to do it on this list, but in the future, if you could indicate which are the hybrid and electric vehicles, I think that'd be interesting to know.
Yeah, we, yeah, okay.
We get some of those done, we have one or two of those donated a year from somebody, the hybrids, or do we purchase?
No, no, we have to purchase those, right, usually the state subsidizes, you know, with the clean, you know, green communities.
There aren't options for the bigger trucks.
Right, in fact, we have to, we have to, whenever possible, purchase a green vehicle.
Yeah, so, I mean, there were options for a 350 with a hybrid, then we would have it, so...
Exactly. The next item I have, and this is annual, it happens around this time of the year, we, we have received the, the fiscal year 2019 Sewer Rate Relief Fund Distribution. The town of Chelmsford received $5,361, the state provides a million, but you can see the MWRA gets about $190,000 of that, so...
It's all a little upsided.
Right, so we, we thank, Jen, John Souza, our Finance Director, he, he mechanically completes this activity every year, so, it's available funds, so we, we seek it and, you know, utilize, obtain it. And the last item I have is a, a meeting schedule for the Board of Selectmen, just as we're sorting, heading in, you know, this board has another meeting two weeks from tonight on the 25th, and the key thing is a reorganization date, you know, and speaking to the town clerk, the election is the 2nd of April, and the request is that the reorganization meeting take place on Thursday evening, the 4th, at 6:00 PM in this room. The School Committee will also be meeting in this building, I believe, a half hour before, doing the same thing. And then, how the calendar falls in April with the five Mondays, the Board of Selectmen would then have regular meetings on the 8th and the 22nd, and then the possibility of, if necessary, a meeting at the senior center prior to the commencement of town meeting on the 29th. So, we, we need to establish this, because people are scheduling hearings and meetings and so forth, so I just wanted to bring this to the board, see if there are any concerns, and not hearing any, that's what we'll plan for. That's all I have in my report this evening, Mr. Chairman, I do have a quick appointment for your confirmation, and as for the Recycling Committee, I'm seeking the confirmation and appointment of Virginia Lee Williams for a one-year term, basically, at the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2019, and then most likely, we'd obviously reappoint her with the others at that time.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Virginia Williams.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five vote. We have one meeting minutes, and that is from our regular meeting?
It's from our tri-board.
Oh, the tri-board meeting.
I don't think I was at that one.
No. Does anyone have any comments on it? Who prepared, Vivian, who prepared this one? Did you do this one? You did this one. Anyone have any questions concerning it?
Make a motion to approve the December 10th tri-board meeting minutes, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Four, zero. We have liaison reports, Pat?
I just have one thing this evening, you may have seen, I think it was in this morning's paper, that we lost a, a long-serving town clerk, Marie St. Hilaire, passed away a little over a week ago. She was, she was the last elected town clerk in Chelmsford, she was first elected in 1972. She served, every three years, she would run again and get re-elected, and then in 1989, when we instituted the, the town charter, the town clerk position became appointed. She was appointed to that position and served until the early 2000s, so a total of just over 30 years, I believe. She was a wonderful person, after she retired from being town clerk, she served, basically, since then, up until her death on the Chelmsford Housing Authority, and was very effective there, she's a wonderful person. She is truly going to be missed.
Thank you. Ken?
So, I went to the North Chelmsford Vinyl, I forget the name of there.
Vinyl Square Master Plan Implementation, right?
Yes, and they're working on their wave-finding signs, and I thought we had a great meeting at the last go-around. For anybody who's interested, because I know when we did this for the Center Village, people showed up sort of at the 12th hour and started questioning the colors and the patterns, and wanted us to start over. They're coming down to the wire to choose the final colors and patterns, so if you're interested, show up. I think in the next meeting, they're going to have Mark Faberman there again to go through and, and kind of whittle it right down to what, what they want to go ahead with. And then, I also went to the Center Village last week, they're master planning, boy, they've come, they've got, they're doing a fantastic job between the benches and the, and the trees they're going to be planting, and the tree guards, and the bike, you know, to park bikes, you know, if you, if you're interested in the Center Village, you should, you know, attend that and see the, the renderings and the drawings and the pictures of what they're going to have. They're working on a lot, and, and I attended my first Minuteman drills yesterday for the walk, Patriots Day, so... Anybody else who wants to join the Minutemen, they're looking for more volunteers.
And Ken can give you all the leads on where to get your historically accurate, correctly-made uniform.
Yep, it's not a uniform, it's an outfit.
Outfit, pardon me.
Anything from the Cultural Council?
Are you going to rank yet, or are you even promoted?
Nope, I'm above the drummer, private.
George?
No, I just, I'm happy to be back, I missed a meeting or two, and I want to thank the people who sent me a few cards and whatever. I said, the only, yes, whoever sent me, I think it was somebody here must have sent me the pink, did you send me the pink pajamas? I love the color, but the size was a little small, so...
Wasn't me.
Anyway, thank you, I got a few nice cards and notes, and people made some calls, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Emily? Just that I was at the Route 40 Committee, Emily's a member, and it seems that they are coming down to their recommendations that they will be making to the Planning Board. They won't really come to town meeting until fall, but they are kind of wrapping things up, and it should be presented to them pretty soon, right? All right?
That's a meeting tomorrow night, 7:00 PM in this room, if anyone is interested in attending.
Very good.
Six P, wait, 6:00 PM, because we're making it earlier, because there were issues, right, sorry.
And I attended the School Committee meeting where they outlined their budget, proposed budget, long, detailed... Long, detailed meeting, section by section, and they voted unanimously to support that. They'll be coming to us soon with that presentation, I believe. They usually do.
They do?
Dr. Lang will be coming in?
Well, Dr. Lang and the School Committee will be here. Your next meeting to appoint the Neshoba Tech, and I think they may be asking for the MSBA supplemental, but I'm not expecting that they're going to present their budget to the board.
They do that to the Finance Committee, right?
They do that to Finance Committee, I think they're Thursday night.
This Thursday?
This Thursday night, or the Finance Committee.
Is there any way, comment on that? Could we get, even though the Finance Committee doesn't post their agenda? Because a lot of people tell me they check the town.
Sure they do.
It's posted, usually on Tuesdays.
On Tuesdays, let me get to where it's going. A lot of people say they check the town schedule either on a Monday or Tuesday and make their schedule for the week, but Finance Committee doesn't post their meeting? I know they don't, but can we at least put a place marker so people know Thursday night there's a Finance meeting?
Well, usually they, once they start, the answer is they're almost done. They only have two meetings left at this point, but we can, but generally they meet continuously from... Going forward, we can ask for a master schedule.
That would be really helpful for many people who...
I plan my week out, you know, a week at a time, so. I went last week to the Finance Committee, but, you know, it's usually last minute, oh, that's right, it's tonight. Sorry.
That's okay. And so anyway, they went through their whole budget and was well-detailed and they'll be presenting it to the Finance people pretty soon. You know, I would say that I did make one comment and I followed it up with Dr. Lang, and that was that in the budget, there is a warrant for a resource officer for one of the schools, for the middle schools. And I wanted to know from them if they felt that that money would be better spent on a social worker for the schools facing, considering all the notoriety that there is that the schools are very much in need of social workers, psychologists, because of the pressure kids are under and so forth. And it's kind of a guns and butter situation. You can't have everything. And we have in the town's budget money for this resource officer. And my question to them was, is that money, would that money better be spent in the School Department, having a more of a social worker at whatever level they decided? I met with Dr. Lang, you know, he agreed that there's no question that's needed, but that they have, they have an outline of studying that issue and where that person should go and exactly what they should be doing. And so they feel they would like to leave it the way it is for now and so that's what we're going to do. And that money will be left with the town and the resource person will be part of the warrant and the school will look at the future and see if they, at some point, they don't need the officer, but they do need the social worker and maybe that money can be shifted at some point in the future. So anyway, wanted to bring that up. So we have an executive session?
We have.
Any press questions?
Any press questions tonight? No? All right, no press questions?
So I'll make a motion to adjourn into executive session with...
Not returning? Yes.
I second.
Regarding the police superior officers collective...
Yes, regarding the... Police Superior Officers' Sergeants Union.
Aye. Aye.
Roof call.
Aye.
Roof call, roof call or all in favor or whatever?
It's a roof call.
Okay, roof call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five oh, Vivian, although.
It's actually four oh.
Ken cannot attend. Ken cannot attend.
I'm eyeing away, but I'm out of here.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
We have a second?
Oh, yeah.
They don't need to do it, boys. Or can do that.